Jacob Jacobo.
Butler.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Lipscomb.
Here.
Oakbridge.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thrasch.
Here.
Vincentza.
Here.
All members in.
Okay, first thing this evening is the minutes. Has everyone received a copy of the minutes from the October 17th meeting? Does anyone have any question with those minutes or anything they want to bring up? Okay, here's nothing. We need a motion to accept those minutes. Thrasch, give me a second. Butler. And both and a second with a roll call vote.
Butler.
Yes.
Jordan. Yes. Lipscomb.
Yes.
Oakbridge. Yes. Smith.
Yes.
Thrasch.
Yes.
Vincentza.
Yes.
All members in.
The minutes are approved then, are there official notes for the October 17th meeting? I'm going to take a minute or two here to address something prior to starting the agenda. Something was brought to my attention today, and Jacob and I talked about it, and I think due to the fact that as council president, we understand that our council meetings are the first and third Monday of each meeting, or of each month, I'm sorry. Those are the regular minutes, our regular meeting that are held, and our utility meetings and our finance meetings, all of those meetings are pre-scheduled meetings. Something came to my attention today, Jacob and I discussed it, and since we are basically as council, president, and clerk, it is our responsibility to make sure that the meetings are handled correctly and properly, and that we don't do anything improper or illegal. I don't normally address things that come out on social media, but I think this is something that could very easily be misunderstood, and I think it needs to be clarified and addressed. There was some information put out on apparently several social media sites that stated that council held a last-minute council meeting on November 1st, on Tuesday, and the public was not notified. Well, to clarify everything here in public, since we have the news media and everybody here, this can be clarified, there in fact was not a council meeting held on November 1st in the city building here at nine o'clock in the morning. There was a meeting in fact that had nothing to do with council. There was a request by a building owner and by a several members of the Chamber of Congress and the Chamber of Congress themselves. They wished to have a meeting with police chief, the mayor, the service director, and anybody involved in the enforcement of parking problems in the downtown area. They felt there were some things that needed to be addressed, and they wanted to have this meeting, and it was scheduled between them and the council meetings, or between the chamber and the business owners. This is not a council meeting. Council had nothing to do with this. Anything that involves parking or enforcement or anything of that nature, this is entirely operation, daily operations in the city, and the only way council would be involved in that would be if in fact there are parking regulations by residents or by ordinances that would have to be changed. Council would vote on those. But the actual enforcement and how they're going to handle parking situations is not something for council. So at this point, since things oftentimes get spread on social media and when they are inaccurate, it could possibly look like myself or our current council clerk are doing something improper, and the Open Meetings Act and the Sunshine Law specifically state how things have to be addressed and when there are special meetings, the notice that has to be given to the public. So this was not a council meeting, it was a meeting held directly with the administration that has the decisions on enforcement of that nature, anything to do with daily operations. This meeting however was in fact no given notice to the public. It was in the newspaper, it was on the city website, and I think even council all received emails that this meeting was going to take place. As far as the date and time, they were notified the minute that the date and time was picked. It was kind of an agreement between the chamber and the people that make these decisions as far as the enforcement. So there was public notification, but it was not a council meeting, and I do not want anyone to get the impression that we were holding an illegal secret council meeting without notifying the public. So I wanted to have that clarified so that nobody, like I said, since I'm responsible, Jacob is responsible to make sure that the public is notified properly, I wanted to bring that up. Okay, that's enough of that. First thing on the agenda under new businesses is the gas aggregation process. Council heard some presentations from two different companies, and it was up to them to make a decision which of the companies that they felt was the best one to choose for the city if they choose, want to choose one. So at this time, we'll start off with JC, because you guys got to have to make a decision tonight on which one of these companies are going to be chosen. So JC, do you want to start in, voice in on this before we decide?
Hey, I've made my decision, so.
Okay.
Trivell.
Pardon?
Trivell.
Okay. Christie, do you have anything?
I had contacted a couple municipalities. I spoke to one mayor, I spoke to some township trustees in various areas. The ones I spoke to used to have Aspen. To say they were displeased is another statement. They had very good things to say about Trivell, and based upon some other research that I did, I am going, I think that we should go with Trivell.
Karen.
I'm with Trivell.
Dawn. Like Christie, I made a lot of phone calls. I called different cities, different utility managers from Shelby, Ohio, Steubenville Township, Mingo Junction, Bridgeport, called a lot of different people with asking their opinions. And some of them had Aspen, others had Trivell. All of my results were both companies were very, they were impressed, they liked the companies that they had, which made me feel good making all these phone calls, that whichever company we pick, I think we're going to have a good company. I was really leaning toward Trivell with the fact that Larry Taylor, who was with Volunteer, was a spokesperson for the city of St. Clairsville. I feel real comfortable with that. One of my final points is going to be what the price is and what they can do for the citizens of St. Clairsville, and not quite sure when we'll know what prices are. Any ideas on that? Or any word at all on what we can be locked in at or?
Depends on how fast we get the contract and to be able to work with them, but I do believe that's how it was written up, right? So that we have the authority to, whenever, whenever is best interest of the city, we can sign and lock it in.
To market change prices too.
Okay, so we don't even have ballpark figure on where the rates are at today?
I haven't looked, no.
Okay. But, you know, that's going to be my final decision, is the cost for the citizens. Because like I said, both are very well-respected companies, they were all spoken highly of. I appreciate that, and like I said, I think we'll have a good company no matter which we pick, but right now I'm just kind of holding off until we can figure out a price.
Hey, Beth.
I think it's important we offer an option to our residents to do something like we were doing with Volunteer Energy, so I think it's important we act quickly too, and my vote will be Trivell.
Yeah, I noted Christie and Dawn did a lot of research on it, so I was going to rely on them as a recommendation, kind of, kind of as like a subcommittee, so. And the gentleman from Trivell called me to see if I had any questions, which I thought was nice, the other company didn't, but whatever they recommend, I think I'm going to go with Trivell.
I've decided on Trivell. Are we pronounced Trivell?
I think that's.
Trivell.
Okay, at this point, I think everyone's pretty.
I forgot to say one thing. There is a difference between the two companies that I think we really need to consider, and that is, there is no consultant contract with Aspen Energy, so there are no terms. They are saying, "We will do this for you." If they do not follow through, we have no recourse, we have no remedy under the law for what they fail to perform. There is no contract. With Trivell, there would be a contract so that they can be held accountable if they don't basically hold up their end of the bargain, and I think that's very important for our citizens.
Okay, I believe council decision at this point on which company only requires a motion and a vote? So at this point, does anyone wish to make a motion on selecting?
I move that we go with Trivell.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We will take a roll call vote on the motion.
Butler.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lipscomb.
Yes.
Oakbridge.
Yep.
Smith.
Yes.
Thrasch.
Yes.
Vincentza.
Yes.
All members in a favor, motion.
So is that 44? Yes.
That is 44.
Seven to zero, and Trivell will be the company that this day will sign the contract.
So what is the next step then?
I believe that.
We'll do an ordinance, and Trivell will give us your contract, and it'll be, yes, it'll be attached to the ordinance, and that'll be our guess.
We want to move on this.
Right, and it's ready, you can move on it tonight. All you have to do is pass the ordinance, the legislation.
Is there a way to let the residents know more clearly exactly what this is?
The company will be sending out, just like Volunteer Energy did back in 2010, they'll periodically send out postcards notifying residents that you have the, you can either opt out of the city's plan and go do your own thing, or, you know, this is what they'll provide for you as the aggregator.
But that'll come from them?
Yes, that comes from them.
And remind me, everybody's in unless they opt out, or you're going to get something that's going to say opt in?
You're in unless you opt out.
Okay.
At least that was the way it was with Volunteer Energy.
Can we, oh, I'm sorry. Is that how it will be?
Yes.
As it is.
Can we let the residents know, like through their utility bill or something, that they will be receiving that?
This is with Columbia Gas.
This is gas.
This is gas aggregation, this is not with our municipal utilities. This is just a service to provide a lower rate for a group.
Can we let, can we still let the residents know that? That that's the.
We can send out a notification on our utility bills to them. The problem is going to be the timing of it. Next month is already out, it would be.
Well, the next one would be December.
December, so they would probably have their letters out to them before, but we can actually have it listed too, just as another reminder, but it's not going to be until December, what, 7th or 8th is when it gets out? Yeah.
Can they just post something on the website?
Yeah, we can, we'll definitely do that too, and the legislation and everything will be posted on there too, whenever, when you guys pass that.
So this is definitely an opt-out situation?
Yes.
Where all of the citizens will be in?
Unless you, unless you opt out of the program.
And if they want to go with their own different supplier, then they opt out?
Yes, or they want to deal directly with Columbia Gas.
Then how big of a window are we going to have where we got to sign with an agreement on the contract with the price?
That I, you could probably answer.
It will depend, but typical for natural gas is 12 to 24 months. You can go longer, but you have to send out every two years by law the opt-out letter, which provides residents 21 days to opt out. So there'll be plenty of communication, Trivell will help with the communication about hiring of Trivell and the next steps on what's going to happen in the community.
And with the prices constantly going up or down, which in this case I do believe down, how big of a window, I mean, like if you tell us right now it's at 60 cents, how do we know, I mean, how big of a window are we going to have on a jump?
I think it just depends on how long we want to wait, because eventually, I know several council members have expressed interest that we want to try and get this done as soon as possible for everybody, but we also want to try and make sure we have the lowest possible, but there comes a point that it's okay, it's, we got to go, or, yes, not. So, I mean, Scott, what would it be, you know, probably a week or two, and then we're going to be behind the eight ball trying to get, get the whole program set up for even December or the beginning of the year.
Yeah, no, this is, everything you're saying is true. Literally, we have to have an approval of a rate from a supplier, it's gotten ready to go by the 14th of this month to hit a January 1 start date. If we don't have that figured out, it then pushes to February, and I'll be honest with you, if we're into February, whether or not we push to do something now, could artificially raise the price too much, we might be better off waiting until the spring and put something in place. I mean, I don't make money unless the gas is flowing, so that's a horrible recommendation for a guy who's supposed to get paid that way, but if it's the right thing to do, that's how I want to proceed. I'll make that recommendation.
Do you know what the rates are right now? I mean, what is a?
It's been so hard, so literally since we've been talking, rates came down 51, 52 cents per CCF. We instituted, tried to get a lot of our other customers up and running in the last week and the two weeks, and rates then just shot from there at 50 cents, 51, all the way up to 73-ish. It traded and closed today at 67. Plus, you take that price, plus the .165 and add that on to it, that's just what the utilities' default works out to be, but it's come up quite a bit, and then today it kind of trickled down a little bit. So we were worried at the beginning of the day, I mean, it started shooting really high, and it.
Is waiting till February, can that be bad for the customers?
It depends on weather, and you know, what caused the jump up, as you guys know, highly dependent on weather, because it's mostly for residential accounts, and the price of natural gas, if you guys watched the 10-day, 10 to 15-day weather patterns, they were nice, nice, 70-degree weather, we're all out and short still, and then if you go look at the 10 to 15-day at the end of it, it's starting to hit what is November, like normal 40 highs and 25, you know, lows. So it gave the markets an excuse to run up, that's what it did. We'll have to make some decisions, but I think is, I would just recommend it always, like, we have to exercise patience too, to make sure we're not entering into a long-term agreement that would put folks in a bad position, so.
So would, oh, no, I'm, I'm.
I was just wondering though, if the case were to happen, if the prices do drop at a real good rate, if there was a chance that you hold up, would have to hold a special meeting to get a quick vote in?
Well, I mean, I think the way it's written is that you guys are authorizing us to sign whenever it's the best, the best option, so that we wouldn't have to wait and try and do that. It would just be, here it is, hey, guys, I mean, we can give you a quick email or a phone call and say, "Look, you know, we've talked with Scott, we don't think it's getting any lower, here's where we got to go, would you guys yes?" And kind of go from there, but, but that, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what the ordinance is allowing us to do.
Get the mayor's authorized to execute, that's what we're, but what we just did a vote for just said, yeah, we're going to go this way, but we still have to pass this ordinance.
Correct.
Tonight, we're going to do that tonight.
Yes, we'll do that tonight, and then that allows.
Pardon? All systems go on our end once we pass it.
Right, right.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, one final comment, sorry. Our agreement has a provision in it also, because we've been running into this a lot more lately, this volatility in the market, so we've made some adjustments to our agreement that allows us to trigger, to work either myself to sign an agreement under a certain set of requirement specifications, but I think we can also work with Jeremy also, but, you know, it's not like wide open, it's like within a guardrail.
And obviously, we would let council know, you know, what's going on too, so.
Yeah, because that's kind of like my concern, if it does drop from 67, or let's say we go down to 51, we'd really like to move quick.
Yes.
And that's where I thought if we would have to have a special meeting if possible, if that's a possibility.
It's always a possibility, but, you know, the reality of it is trying to get seven people's schedules for something where it could be, okay, you guys authorize us to do it, we're going to act in the best interest of you guys and the citizens and work with the, you know, the aggregator, and say, "Here it is, here's what we got, here's why, and, you know, we'll notify you guys of what's going on."
Yeah, I think that's real important, and.
See, the thing we have to also be concerned about with a quick meeting is, again, as Jeremy did say, is getting everybody together, and once we find out when everybody can get together, we have to give the public a minimum of 48 hours' notice, it has to be in the paper, so by the time we do that, the rate could change again, because it does occasionally change daily or weekly, or, so by the time we could have a meeting, it could go back up again, so just, we just like can't say we're going to have a meeting tomorrow night. Christie.
Is it possible for us to discuss a threshold range that, that we would like to see that he could, they could just act upon without having to notify council, without having to call a special meeting? Because I.
I mean, that's.
No, Christie brings up a very good point, already addressed in here, the answer is point eight. Give me a second, sorry. We set the threshold. I think it's at 87 cents, that's what we did. I tried to put it down here somewhere, just give me a second here to find it. I put it in the wrong place somewhere. Yeah, I think, look, I know I have it here, sorry, I feel like I need a little. One thing I would recommend to council, I know it's in this agreement, I just got to find it here, it is, I think it's 87 cents, but I would also maybe make a motion, if you would, to allow Jeremy, if you wish, to sign the document, okay? So it would maybe take away, well, it could provide the city with the ability to move quickly in the event that rates do start to move. So you're operating within a set of parameters, and if it moves down low enough, you can have your director of services sign for it.
Actually, the mayor, the legislation has the mayor signing.
Or the mayor, that's fine, you just need a fluent person for that.
This ordinance is, if we pass this ordinance, this gives the mayor.
Yes, it's just like the one we did with Volunteer Energy back in 2010. It gives the mayor the authority to sign on behalf of the city.
Right, so I feel like there's no need for a special meeting, right? It's, we're giving you the authority right now to negotiate in the best interest of the city.
Right.
So with communications and Scott, if there becomes this point, we've heard from council, we want to move fast, but we don't want to go walk into something too high. Nobody knows, if anybody knew what that price would be, none of us would be here because we won the lottery.
Exactly.
So nobody knows that. So you're going to, you're going to do your best, counsel, to figure out when to sign this, but we'd like to move soon because we think there's going to be high gas bills from the, but if it makes more sense.
Well, I mean, he said it himself, the November 14th, if we don't have it signed by November 14th, we can't make the January 1.
Right, well, that's why we're getting this done now.
Right, that's why you're doing, so you can authorize the mayor to sign it.
So if by the 14th, we don't have a rate that we find well enough, we can continue to work with them and move on, and go through it, but by the 14th is when we would have to make a decision by January 1st.
So by us passing this tonight, you have everything you need.
Yes.
For the, yes.
And we have to agree tonight on a two-year, three-year?
So if it's up to us.
Yes, I would say.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to read what I have in the agreement, so that way it's clear. We have a limited authority.
Scott, can you go to the?
To the mic.
Mike, thank you.
No worries. It was printed on the other side of this, so I couldn't find it. In any event, we have a limited agency authority that any price in the, with a supplier that would be under 87 cents per CCF, which is a fixed rate, our agent, our authority is limited to require that any term of that NSA, and NSA is an agreement between the community and the supplier, be under three years. So if there was a four- or five-year program that I wanted to bring to you, I would have to come in here and talk to you about it. If I said, "Hey, we want to do a 90 cents per CCF rate, fixed," I have to come see you, that's not within, within this agreement. But if it does go below it, we can move fast, and then that gives us the ability to sign on your behalf. I'm not going to do that, I'm going to pick up the phone, talk to, you know, Jeremy, the mayor, and talk it through, as soon as they say, "Scott, we're good, go ahead and sign it," that would give me the authority. If you want additional authority to sign it, you probably should make a motion to appoint the mayor to be able to do, to affect all, all items necessary to keep a program moving. That's what I would do.
Does this ordinance do that? She's in charge of this?
She's in charge, yes, to execute the plan, so.
So the two-year, three-year, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I could have misunderstood and misremembered, but Aspen was offering a three-year.
Yes.
And you, your recommendation to us two weeks ago was never go with anything longer than two years.
I don't know if I'd say never do that, but I think at this, I think at this point in the market, what's happening, I would say, I think it's a horrible idea.
Okay, so I'm going to equate that to never, horrible idea. So I would say, you know, given we're given you the authority to do this, with the lower, the lower number here makes sense to me with the volatility in the market, so I'm. Absolutely, I mean, it's like what Jeremy's talked about with parts and things with, you know, ordering for like the water project, everything's so high right now, you're kind of stoking the bet that it's going to come down, so, you know, like you guys said, if you knew that for sure, you'd have won the lottery by now, but just hedging a bet that everything's probably going to come down some, so.
And unless I'm mistaken, I'll just throw out here for everybody to kind of kick back from the back to reminding them, even though we're agreeing with this, the customers, the individual customers, if the rate changes to a point where they're not happy with it, they can opt out at any time.
That's true.
If they do not have to, if we sign a two-year contract, they can get out of it in two weeks if they want.
Right.
If they think they can get a better deal with somebody themselves, they can opt out and go wherever they want to go with it. So they're not being locked in to anything other than what they themselves want.
Right, it's just, it's basically like you're going with. Right, it's just, it's basically like you're going with, sort of, not, I'm not gonna compare apples to apples, apples to oranges, sort of like you're picking an insurance provider, saying, we're recommending this provider, because they're gonna give a best deal, however, you can opt out and find your own insurance provider. This is what the city's saying, you know, we've, we've, you know, we're getting into an agreement with this company, because they're gonna do the best deal to find the best prices for us during the term of this contract. However, you as an individual can say, no, it doesn't work for me, I opt out of it.
At no cost, that's the order.
Yes.
Yep.
Scott, can you explain to council, like you explained to me on the phone, the difference between an opt-in and an opt-out is, and what's better?
Sure, so in an opt-in program, you're basically saying, hey, I, the consumer, can opt in your program if I choose to. The problem with that, that, that model is if you're going to suppliers and you're asking them, what's the best rate you can get? Well, you can go look at Apples to Apples website right now and get all the opt-in, you know, programs and rates that you'd like, but knowing that we're going to have a couple thousand households here in St. Clairsville, now I know I'm gonna get fifty-five percent of them, typically in our, in the aggregation world, and if you're getting fifty-five percent, you know what the load looks like, now a supplier's willing to skinny up everything to offer you something that you normally can't get. And then, so if at that point in time, you're giving a rate that's lower than what you could get in the market, but as everyone said here, if the market moves again and goes down with no early termination fee, that individual can seek out their own program if they wish and do whatever they like. So they're protected, there's no risk to the end consumer.
And the city of St. Clairsville can opt out as a customer, just like our citizens?
The, the city facilities could, but the, the contractor...
The contractor, no, the program.
The facility, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
We wanna do the ordinance now, or we...
No, this way you do the ordinance, well, we'll do all the legislation.
You wanna do it, yeah.
You wanna do it.
I mean, that's up to councils.
Well, we could, we could do the ordinance now, if you wanna do it now.
Let's, let's shake it up a bit, Jim, let's do it now.
We can do that.
The world will not casually mix it up, so.
We're not, my words in stone here.
Unless, sure, man.
We'll change it.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Okay, we're gonna address ordinance twenty, twenty-two, forty-four. Jake, would you read, or Elizabeth?
Okay, this is the ordinance that is approving the plan of operation and governance of the city's natural gas aggregation program and declaring emergency. Basically, council has approved Trabel as your aggregator. This will allow the mayor to commit to any contracts on behalf of the city.
Okay, Jake, would you read, would you try and play? Do you, do you read the...
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, forty-four, an ordinance to approve the plan of operation and governance for the city of St. Clairsville's natural gas aggregation program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading, if this has urged the legislation out, so if anyone wishes to take action.
I note that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings is suspended and declaring emergency.
And we need a second. Okay, we will now take a vote on whether or not this will be handled as emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are...
Okay, ordinance twenty, twenty-two, forty-four will be considered emergency legislation, Jake, would you read it for the last reading?
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, forty-four, an ordinance to approve the plan of operation and governance for the city of St. Clairsville's natural gas aggregation program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the last reading, might need a motion to vote on that motion, so.
Make it motion.
You got a second? We will now take a roll call vote to pass the ordinance itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
All members are here.
Okay, ordinance twenty, twenty-two, forty-four is passed. Okay. Kinda nice to do something a little different.
Yeah, sure, great, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on the agenda, under correspondence, we have a letter from the East Richland Christian School, take it, would you read that letter, please?
Dear Mayor Coleman and St. Clairsville City Council, we at East Richland Christian School are excited to serve the city once again this year with a live nativity scene on the plaza at the courthouse. There were many people who drove by to see this depiction of the very first Christmas last year, and many men, women, and children who stopped by to meditate, chat, and pet the animals. It was cold out there, but we all felt very blessed to be able to celebrate the tradition of the birth of Jesus. This year, we ask to be able to do the same thing on Thursday, December eighth, Monday, December twelfth, and Thursday, December fifteenth, from six o'clock to eight o'clock each evening. We are not doing this as a moneymaker, or a fundraiser, or even for publicity. We hand out no information and do not advertise where we are coming from. It is solely a quiet offering to share a peaceful scene with those who pass down the street. Please let me know if the date works out for you, and we will be there. Thank you all so much, and may God bless your holiday celebrations. Beverly Green, English and Drama, East Richland Christian School.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on that, or would anyone...
I'll make a motion if that's what we need.
Sure, that's all we need. A second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are here.
And then you'll let them know, who caused it, who contacted them?
They contacted Jen.
Right, but who's gonna let them know we passed?
Jen Lo, Jen Lo, yes.
Okay, we're also gonna add something off the agenda that was accidentally left, which needs to be addressed and brought up.
It is gobble, pill, sweep, wobble. I'll actually defer to Eric on this one, this is Eric's baby, so we're gonna, we're gonna let him talk about this one.
Asking, I, I don't know if it needs to go for council to vote on, but we would like to have a five K Thanksgiving morning. It's gonna require us to shut a couple roads down. I've been out on the course, there's entry and exit, you know, at different parts, we would just have to reroute some of the cars, but, you know, we'll leave from the amphitheater, go past the high school, down Sugar, down St. Clair, and back, so, you know, we'll also need to take a couple golf carts out onto the road that day, but it's gonna be at nine AM Thanksgiving morning, and we would be looking to have a couple streets shut down for, you know, hour and a half's time on Thanksgiving morning. So that's something that, that I know that you guys are gonna discuss right now, but that's what, that's what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Eric, is there a cost?
Uh, yeah, the, I don't know if it's on that form, we have a couple different ones, but it's twenty-five dollars to, to enter, and the, is the website on, that, I must have not given you the form with the...
No.
Oh, yes, it is on there. All the registration is handled through the website, it's, it's on the form, so any information is, is on the website, it's on our Facebook page with any, anything that anyone would need, so it's twenty-five dollars to enter.
And Eric, tell them that it is being raised for families in distress. Mike, I see your name on here, thank you very much, I, I think it's a very good thing, so.
It's something that we would like to do every year, you know, where family in need, you know, in, in St. Clairsville, we would like to do something for them, so, you know, kinda the way that it's worked out is the sponsors that you see on the paper, you know, they have paid for our timing service the day of, because obviously we can't do that, so K&amp;J Timing out of Wheeling, they will be there for bib handouts, you know, all the electronic will be done through them. Sheets is donating all of the coffee, water, drinks for the day. Giacentas is gonna do all of the food, and it's, it's for the Diamedi family. OJ is fighting a battle with cancer right now, I know that he's been at the James Cancer Hospital for quite a while. They, they live in St. Clairsville, he has two little girls, you know, his oldest is involved in some of our programs, she attends St. Clairsville Elementary School, so this is just the first one that we decided to do, but we would like to do this every year to, to benefit a family.
So all proceeds would go to the family?
Uh, yes, we're not going to make a dollar off of this. It, it'll just cover our cost with the sponsors and...
Shirts.
I've talked to the family, and they understand, like, the twenty-five dollars, it's, you know, six dollars of that is going to pay for the shirt, and then nineteen dollars per person will go to the family. So we will not have any cost into it, but we are also not going to make any money.
I assume the family is, is agreeable?
Yes, yes, and very appreciative, so we'll decide that we can help them out.
Anybody have any other questions, JC?
I'll make a motion.
Well, just one, Matt, you don't have any issues? Matt, Matt, is the police the...
We've coordinated with, with the chief and also the street department about getting barricades out and everything, especially being Thanksgiving and, and going through it, so the chief's been well into all of this and going through it, and he knows the routes.
Sorry, Jason.
No, you're fine.
I'm sure they would appreciate any volunteers that would like to come down and help. Okay, JC, do I make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we let the block gobble till we hobble.
A second?
A second.
Can we go over?
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
Thanks, unanimous, by council, is permission given, the ordinance, and I'm sure the, the restrooms are there. Okay, that pretty much takes care of that. The reports, Mary, I have reports here?
Yes, sir, and I'll make it short. As we're heading into fall and winter, we've got a lot going on in the city. The last couple of weeks have seen a lot of activity by the rec and rec center, however, Christie asked me so nicely if I could take some of this out, so she can report, I'm going to do that, so I'll skip the part I had about direct center, except that it was very well done. Have meeting, we've had meetings with our law director, Elizabeth Glick, finalizing legislation and discussing city issues. Also, at my direction, I asked the law director to send a letter to the resident regarding South Park, he should be receiving it this week. I have much appreciation, thanks to Jen, Roberta, and Jeremy for scrambling to get some of our grant information in in a timely fashion, because the timelines were really short, but they pushed the envelope, the government. I was contacted last Friday by Governor Dewine's office, they wanted to make a stop in St. Clairsville on Tuesday, and they wanted me to coordinate a casual coffee, so the elected officials can present issues to the governor. Well, that visit was on Tuesday. First, I wanna thank Lieutenant TJ Stewart and Councilwoman Butler for providing Newtown venue for the meet and greet. The governor's office said to me, we can take you to McDonald's, I said, no, we don't wanna do that, let's go to a really nice place in town where you have some control, and like I said, Tara and TJ were wonderful about it. And not only did almost all of our council people come, but the commissioners, township trustees, and citizens from St. Clairsville. Good questions were asked and answered. In fact, Eric, I'm gonna ask you to get up again, I want you to tell council what a good job you did telling the governor about our wish list for the Fine Arts Center, and what resulted from that.
Um, so we left the meeting, and he actually approached us about wanting to come down and see the, the park area, so it, it worked out where he was able to come down, he spent twenty-five, what'd he say, twenty-five minutes, a half hour, the, the football team was practicing, so we went out on the football field, got a picture with all the kids, it was, it was really neat, you know, for, for that to happen to the kids out there, and, you know, he loved our area, he totally agrees with what we're trying to do down there, so it was just very beneficial that he was able to get his eyes on it. I know that he was here in the spring, but he didn't really get to see anything, he actually toured the area, so we were grateful for that, and, you know, hopefully makes his way back this way soon.
Do all we can to get in here, but thank you, Eric, he did a one, again, a wonderful job of selling what we wanna do with the Appalachian funds, I appreciate that. Leaf pickup, I believe, is going to happen this week, I know there's been a glitch, and I'll let Jeremy address that. Refer to their website for your pickup day, and that's about it, Jim, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I just wanted to know that the governor also went to the firehouse.
He did go to the firehouse, I had asked the fire chief, and he says the fire chief could be there, he did go check out the firehouse too, so it was a really good day for St. Clairsville, and I think a good day for Governor Dewine, I mean, the photo of him with all the kids was classic, it was great.
Yeah, and I, really, he did not seem to be in a hurry, and I'm sure he's got a...
He wasn't, but like, four of his handlers kept saying, he's gonna be in Marietta like now, he's gonna, like, okay, I'll get him out of here eventually.
It was nice to be part of that.
It was, it was wonderful, thank you guys all who came, I appreciate it.
And then the other question that I had is the letter to, regarding South Park, what is the contents?
Uh, the content is asking if they would be in favor of having a formal agreement drawn up to either sell it or to...
Okay, and that letter's in the mail?
Yes. Oh.
I'm good.
Can we get a copy of that letter?
Yes, you can have a copy of it.
Okay, because I'm one, I'm wondering, is there anything regarding an easement in there, or is it just about, okay.
So you'll, you'll email that to us, then?
Mm-hmm.
Just, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, hearing none, thank the mayor. We'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
All right, evening, council, we'll make up time, I normally give no report with this, but there's too many things going on. Legislation tonight, the twenty, twenty-two, forty-two, that's the ODNR Public Works, that's an emergency, I need that tonight, because the grant's due November fifteenth. You talked about twenty, twenty-two, forty-three is the water distribution contract, I need that tonight also, an emergency, because I need to get the loan processed for that by December first, to get the contractor on board. What we've got with that project is some lead time items of twenty-four months, and a six-hundred-day project, which if you know, that's a year and a half project, and we're already behind the eight ball with that. Gas aggregation, you guys already handled, and then twenty, twenty-two, forty-five, the Ohio EPA has a generator grant for the water plant, our generator down there right now is forty years old, and it's third-hand, it came from the military into the state of Ohio, and then to us, it was just serviced, barely has any parts available, we're, we're scavenging things to get, to get it up and running, it's running now, but it's one of those things, we're gonna have to do it, and this grant opportunity came up to go through it. Meetings, we had twenty-five meetings, completed projects, the water distribution project was out to bid, that's the legislation item twenty, twenty-two, forty-three, the award is to James White Construction, the total of that project is going to be seven point six million dollars, going through it. I have the set, if anyone wants to see where all the sets, or where all the drawings are going, in, in the, the area. Rec, or rec center restrooms are almost finished, the fixtures have been replaced, the floor, the walls are all taken care of, just need to work on some other additional walls, some electrical and, and some other things. We had our civil service exam.
What was available, what money we thought we might have to be able to go after with the grant? And then what options on the master plan you wanted to work for?
So it was you and the rec director?
Mm-hmm.
And myself? And it had to go towards the rec? Didn't it have to go towards the rec?
The...
The grants?
The grant, that grant, not necessarily, but that was one that he approached us about doing. So there's other things that could have been used for, but he approached us with it.
Do you have like a list of other possibilities? Do you have one that's printed out? I mean, you don't have to get it to me now, I can get it.
Purchase of land for outdoor activities, purchase of land in large and existing park, purchase of wetlands, natural areas, et cetera, unique outdoor recreation opportunity, purchase of stream or lakefront, purchase of urban land for public playgrounds, picnicking, non-professional sports facilities, skate parks, dog parks, open play areas, purchase of natural areas for preserves or passive outdoor recreation will be permitted, purchase of linear corridors for trails or greenways, purchase of land for so, a support facility, parking, restroom, concession building for outdoor recreation.
Okay, could I have a copy of that, please?
Yeah, it's on, it's online.
Okay, could I have a copy of that, please? Okay. Also, on that, the construction, the James White Construction Company?
Mm-hmm.
Were there other bids?
There were two bids. Uh, one was eight point nine million and one was seven point six million.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the service director? Okay, here now we'll move on to police chief. Matt, also Matt, do you want to give a more professional opinion on the hardship that would create to the department to try to take somebody off the road? Police, police inform tax, police.
Good evening, council. The monthly report for October, we had four hundred and nine calls that we answered, eight accidents, thirty arrests, five warrants served, two domestics, and one hundred and four traffic stops. As Jeremy mentioned, we did apply for a grant and were awarded through the state of Ohio for body worn armor that will supply six rifle caliber plated ballistic plates and carriers to be placed in each cruiser, one in each cruiser for response to active shooters, active threats. This grant pays for seventy-five percent of that cost of fifty-six hundred dollars. And as Jim mentioned briefly, I think, one, to answer maybe your question, Linda, to pay one of the guys to work that, you'd probably be, you would have to pay him at a police officer's pay rate, which would be pretty high compared to somebody who was doing parking enforcement as a part-time position. Two, to do that fairly, so nobody can say, you check this car but not that car. The whole street, Main Street, Market Street, the side streets, everything that has designated parking has to be walked out and walked back the very next hour and checked twice. To do that, at least once a day, you're taking a guy off the road for two and a half, three hours. By the time he gets the tickets done, does the paperwork, and we just can't, we don't have the officers to afford that kind of time, walking on foot off of street. If a call comes in, it kills the response time, which can be critical. That's why we never have a uniformed officer doing that job.
Okay. Anybody have any questions to the chief? Okay, we'll move on to the finance director. And then if you have, of course, you can...
I just want to say that Jeremy and I will be working on the temporary budget and hopefully I'll present it at the next council meeting. And then I'd like to have it passed on the first council meeting in December, if we could. That way we give two readings, but we can't actually do any budget work or payroll or anything in January unless we get the temporary budget passed. And that's just based on the first three months of, of the year.
So if you give it to us the next council meeting, that's the middle of November?
Yes, and then if we could, I'd like to pass it on the first one in December. That would be two readings.
How would that be two readings? If you just gave it to, oh, you would expect a reading next week would be one?
And then two.
And then two?
You'll have time to review it, yes.
Okay, any other questions for the finance director? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Humpy.
Thanks, Jim. Christie is going to report this evening on the upcoming planning commission meeting. Second item, the board of zoning appeals has a meeting set up for Tuesday, November twenty-second at 6:00 P.M. Perry and Associates is proposing to set up their office at 128 North Market Street. Currently, that's where Sheehan Law Group is located. Sheehan Law Group purchased 150 West Main Street. They're going to be moving into that where Perry and Associates is now. And the two parties are working with an agreement to have Perry and Associates move down there. So again, that'll be Tuesday, November twenty-second at 6:00 P.M. And anybody if you have questions, feel free to ask. You certainly can come to that meeting. What they're looking to do is continue to not perform the use as an office at that location. The only other item I had, there is a new business, Wayne Doors. They're setting up an office at Plaza West at 103 Plaza Drive. That's the former Skate Center. So any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, Mr. President. Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll move on now to the council committee reports. Finance first, the IP Edwards, please.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. I have no report tonight. The next finance committee meeting is, is November twenty-first before the council meeting, the regular council meeting.
Utilities, Mr. Butler.
Yes, we got a meeting tonight. We went over the billing report. We reviewed policy for smoke testing repairs. And we also reviewed the water and sewer tap policy and discussed some language changes in that. Our next meeting will be December fifth at 6:15.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Move on to police, Soapage.
Yes, our next police committee meeting will be November twenty-first, the next council meeting, after the council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Northside, Mr. Vincentza.
I have no report, but just would like to have everybody remember and thank our veterans coming up on this Friday.
Thank you.
Southside Streets, Dave Fresh.
No report.
Do you have anything on safety?
No report.
Okay, Jordan, Linda, Building and Ground, should you have the report?
No report, just happy to know that there's been a left.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, Mr....
Yes, thank you. The planning commission will meet on November fourteenth at 6:00 P.M. here in council chamber. The purpose of this meeting is to consider the final site plan proposed for Trinity St. Clairsville Neighborhood Hospital. There are blueprints, sketches, and I do have those if anyone would like to see them after the meeting. The next meeting, like I said, is November fourteenth at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Christie? Okay, we'll move on, fire district.
The board approved the promotion of Aaron Peterson to lieutenant, and that is due to the retirement of Lieutenant Ketsel. Also, there has been a hired person for the new cares director position, but the commissioners want to announce it on Wednesday, so the county will have a new cares director.
Have you talked to the fire chief since the governor came? I just wondered what his...
Yes, they talked about the, the plans of the fire department.
Good.
Of course, they, you know.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Any, any other questions for Linda? Okay, move on to recreation, Slipscomb.
The rec board met on October twentieth at the rec center. The board voted unanimously to request the law director to send a letter to Mr. William Brooks regarding him granting a written easement of his portion of property, which serves as the access to South Park in St. Clairsville. It was requested that the letter have in it a response deadline date for Mr. Brooks to indicate his decision. Obviously, that's been done. The restrooms were completed in the gym. The painting in both restrooms was done by rec center staff. The floors got new coatings, epoxy. They look like brand-new floors, really, really nice job. The American Legion Post 159 donated a new American flag to the rec center for the outside flag pole. I know that was mentioned, I think, at the last meeting, that the flag was, it needed to be retired. So many thanks from the rec center and the city of St. Clairsville to the American Legion for that donation. The rec center will be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, November eighth, and Wednesday, November ninth, for the election. The polls open at 6:30 a.m. tomorrow morning and are open until 7:30 p.m. There will be a craft show at the rec center on November nineteenth from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There were still a few vendor spots available. The cost for a vendor spot is twenty-five dollars. I'm assuming, Eric, are there still vendor spots?
Three.
Three spots open. Bantam basketball registration ends this week. So far, there are one hundred and eighty-four youth signed up. I know that they did touch on the Turkey, the Turkey Day 5K. I'm just going to go over a few things, because I think there are a few things that I had jotted down that maybe weren't in Eric's summary. The Turkey 5K is Thanksgiving morning at 9:00 a.m. They would like this to be an annual traditional event. One hundred percent of the proceeds will go to a St. Clairsville family in need. This year, the recipient is the OJ DiMaggio family. K&amp;J Timing out of Wheeling, they run a lot of local and state track meets, will run the race. They take care of the website that you sign up on. All donations would be to pay for them. They have corporate sponsors and individual sponsors. The cost for that K&amp;J Timing is twelve hundred dollars, but the sponsorships are taken care of from donations, separate donations. They will take all of the registration money and write a check to the rec center for the event. Each participant gets a T-shirt. The costs of the shirts are seven dollars, which will be paid for the proceeds of each participant. So the family will receive eighteen dollars for every person who enters the race. You can walk or run. There is also a place on the website, when you sign up, you can make an extra donation, or you can just go to the website and donate. You don't have to participate in the race. So anyone who wants to donate can just go online, and a hundred percent of that would go to the family. Volunteers have been lined up by Eric for traffic control. Eric, Jeremy, along with the police, fire, street, and EMS have coordinated the roadblocks. They will notify residents by press release which roads will be shut down for this two-hour period during the race. And every resident is going to be shut down, has another entrance or exit. Giacentos is donating all the food for the event. Sheets is donating the water, coffee, and Gatorade, along with other corporate sponsors who are donating money, again, to cover the cost of the, the people that are running the race. The next board meeting is November seventeenth at 4:30 p.m.
Thank you, Christie. Anybody have any questions?
I do, I have a couple of questions, Christie, thanks for that report. The rec centers close election day and the day after?
Yes.
The day after?
The day after the election, I'm not sure.
They have to, the equipment's not going to be...
They have to get the machines out and everything, so they told us they'll get them out by 3:30 Wednesday. We'll be there, but like, the court's not open.
I think they need trucks, I think they use moving trucks to get that equipment out of there.
And the deadline for response on the easement of the road as well?
I do not know. November twenty-eighth.
Thank you. And there are three vendor spots for the craft fair on the nineteenth. If somebody were interested, how is it they do that?
They can sign up online on our website, or you can call in and decide whether to...
What's, what's the phone number?
Uh, six nine five, twenty thirty seven.
And if somebody were interested, they'd need to act, act quickly? Right, your spots are up? And the date is the nineteenth?
Nineteenth, yes.
Okay, true, thank you.
And I do have one more thing that was left off. The Christmas parade is the twentieth, and they will be using our parking lot.
Of course.
Chamber Christmas parade.
I think we're participating right here. December twentieth?
November twentieth, that'll be before the next announcement.
December twenty-fourth. Tree lighting's the day before.
Nineteenth, tree lighting.
Okay.
It's just like crafting, it's St. Clairsville craft?
Yeah, it's just, we're just testing it.
Okay, but that's what it's called, St. Clairsville craft? Thank you.
Christie?
It's not actually for you, it's for Jeremy, but the flag that they're donating, can we get that tree trimmed behind the flag? It's getting stuck in the tree.
The tree's been trimmed multiple times. If, if we trim it a little bit more, it's going to end up dying. So we're trying to prolong the tree as long as we can, because it's, it's a pretty substantial load, so. Yes and no.
Black hole?
Well, we've talked about that too, but there's just been so many other things pop up. So that, that's not off the table either.
Any other questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is park duty. Do you have anything for the park duty?
No report, except that the lights and everything are up and running. I don't know if anybody's seen the video, but it is beautiful.
Christie?
Pickle ballers would like to thank them for the light.
Okay, any other questions? We'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. Law director Elizabeth McLean.
Okay, council did have four pieces of legislation reports, but since we dealt one, we only have three to go over now. The first one is resolution number twenty-two dash forty-two. That's the resolution authorizing directing the public service director to file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to secure financial assistance for work associated with the construction of a multipurpose athletic court and a shelter with two attached restrooms and declaring an emergency. This is work that would be done at Central Park. The deadline for that particular grant is November fifteenth, and that is why they're requesting an emergency vote.
Okay, thank you. So twenty-two dash forty-two, that's the first reading.
Resolution number twenty-two forty-two. A resolution authorizing and directing the public service director to file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to secure financial assistance for work associated with the construction of a multipurpose athletic court and a shelter with two attached restrooms and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading. It's requested the emergency. Does anyone wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion, we need a second.
Jim? That's a quick question. In the heading, it says to secure financial assistance. Does that mean, does that mean a grant?
It's a fifty-fifty grant.
Fifty-fifty, okay.
Okay, we have a motion. In a second, we'll now take a roll call vote to determine whether or not this will be considered emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed?
Okay, that requires five to be considered emergency, so it will be considered emergency legislation. Jacob, would you read it for the final time?
Resolution number twenty-two forty-two. A resolution authorizing and directing the public service director to file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to secure financial assistance for work associated with the construction of a multipurpose athletic court and a shelter with two attached restrooms and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Rash, we need a motion.
Make a, yes, make a motion. Have it pass, sorry.
Second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Six members in favor, one opposed?
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-two is being passed. Move on to twenty-two dash forty-three.
Okay, twenty-two dash forty-three is the resolution to tentatively award a construction contract to James White Construction Company for the water distribution system improvements, Phase One and Two A projects, as it was the lowest and best responsive bidder and declaring an emergency. It is tentative, it's contingent upon all project funding, funding being finalized and released to the city. So this is the first step, so Jeremy can complete the loan process.
Jim, I have some questions, probably for Elizabeth. I just don't understand it, that's why I'm asking. On section one, it mentions tentatively, in the last six words says terms and conditions suitable to council. Does that come after?
Yes, it's EPA loan. That was the holdup that we had with the I-70 project that has cost us over forty thousand dollars, was council wanting to see the terms of the loan. But it's an EPA loan. It'll probably be like one or two percent still, so we'll come back to that according to this.
And then on page two, section three, it says then this resolution shall be deemed to have passed.
This is just language that the state provided in there. This is one of the state-provided pieces of legislation. Basically, it means if you fail to pass it as an emergency, it'll have to be read for three, uh, three meetings. And under our charter, it would then take thirty days after that point to become effective, which would significantly delay the project and increase the cost.
Okay, and then section four, I'm not sure I fully understand that either.
Just means it was adopted during the open meetings, compliant with the Open Meetings Record Act.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Jacob, would you read twenty-two dash forty-three?
Resolution number twenty-two forty-three. A resolution to tentatively award a construction contract to James White Construction Company for the water distribution system improvements, Phase One and Two A projects, as it was the lowest and best responsive bidder and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading. This has been requested to be passed on an emergency basis. Does anyone wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion, second, we'll now take a roll call vote to determine if it will be considered emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Jimmy, I have a quick question. It's just Jeremy, where is the James White Construction Company?
We're, they're the ones that did our East Ten Connection project. They're a very capable company, a very good local group, got local people that are hired, so. It should work out really well.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, this has been considered emergency, so we'll now take a, take a, second, final reading before we take a roll call vote.
Resolution number twenty-two forty-three. A resolution to tentatively award a construction contract to James White Construction Company for the water distribution system improvements, Phase One and Two A project, as it was the lowest and best responsive bidder and declaring an emergency.
That is the final reading, and now we need a motion, pass, this is, I made my motion. In a second, we'll now take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
The resolution twenty-two dash forty-three is passed. Okay, the final piece of legislation is resolution twenty-two forty-five.
Okay, and this is twenty-two twenty, twenty-two forty-five is a resolution authorizing the public service director to submit an application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Emergency Generator Equipment Grant Program for grant funds for the acquisition of an emergency generator for the city's water treatment plant and declaring an emergency. The deadline of this grant is November twenty-first.
Is this a fifty-fifty, or?
No, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant. So up to fifty thousand dollars, it will be supplied. The issue is that the generator is going to be about eighty-six thousand dollars or more, so. But it's still an amount of money that can go substantially towards the project, so.
So no match, is this?
No match, this is a straight grant. Now, if we can get it cheaper, we'll, we'll try like tech to get it cheaper, but that's where everything's at right now.
Okay, Jacob, would you read twenty-two dash forty-five, please?
Resolution number twenty-two forty-five. A resolution authorizing the public service director to submit application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Emergency Generator Equipment Grant Program for grant funds for the acquisition of an emergency generator for the city's water treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
That is the first reading. This again has been requested to be passed as an emergency. Does anyone wish to take further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended declaring an emergency.
Yeah, a motion, second. A motion, second, we'll now take a roll call vote to consider it as emergency.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, resolution twenty-two forty-five will be considered emergency, so we need to read it final time.
Resolution number twenty-two forty-five. A resolution authorizing the public service director to submit an application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Emergency Generator Equipment Grant Program for grant funds for the acquisition of an emergency generator for the city's water treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
I'll move a motion.
We have a motion to pass, second. We'll now take a roll call vote to pass the resolution itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Resolution twenty-two forty-five is being passed. That concludes all the ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Nothing else on the agenda. The next council meeting will be November twenty-first, Monday, at 7:00 P.M. Here at the council chamber. At this time, I have the motion. Second.